Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Exeter Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting for Tuesday, August 19, 2025. I'm going to start by introducing the members of the board, then I have a couple of comments to make before we get going this evening. To my far left, Martha Pennell. Next to her is Kevin Baum, Laura Montagno, John Dal Santo. To my far right, Esther Olson-Murphy. My name is Bob Pryor. I'll be the chair this evening. Before we get going, so I have a comment for the members of the board. Something I want you all to think about. Teresa Page has unfortunately left Exeter and has stepped down from the board. So we have an opening for a voting member. Right now, it's myself, Laura Davies, Kevin, and Esther are the voting members. And the alternates are Mark Lemus, whom I thought was going to be here this evening, but he's not. I thought he said he might be here this evening. Mark Lemus, Martha Pennell, John Dal Santo, and Laura Montagno. So one of the four of you will be, I used the word loosely, promoted, to become a voting member. And I would like you to think about whether or not each of you, and we'll go through this in order of your date of appointment.
He's arrived.
And Mark Lemus is here. Excellent. Hey, Mark.
Hey.
Welcome.
Not a problem. I was just saying at the beginning, Mark, this is Mark Lemus, alternate member, that the opening that Teresa has left by stepping down from the board will be filled with one of the alternates. So I'd like the four alternates, Mark, Martha, John, and Laura, to think about whether or not they're interested in becoming a full-time member, and we'll discuss that toward the end of the meeting and other business. The second thing is that we have two somewhat complicated cases before us this evening. And so I would simply ask for the indulgence of the members of the public. I realize that emotions could run high, especially on the second one. And so I would just ask that people keep it focused on the issue that's before us. Sometimes the zoning is very, very narrow, what we look at. We do take it very seriously, but sometimes all we're really looking at is a very narrow issue, and that is the case this evening, whether or not the applicant is going to receive a variance as they've requested. And so it's not about the scope of the project, it's simply about this one issue. So I'd ask people to keep that in mind, to keep the comments brief and as positive as possible. With that as a preface, did you want to look at any of the minutes first, Mr. Baum? Would that be the July 1?
If the board is willing, I wasn't around for the other set of minutes, and I will be recusing myself from the second application.
Right. So it might be prudent for us to take a few minutes and look at the July 1 minutes. We have Esther, Martha, Laura, and Mark. Kevin, you weren't even here.
No, I was thinking the other set of minutes, the July 15.
Great.
We could take both minutes.
But Laura's not here, so I'm not sure.
Yeah. And I can't touch them, even though I'm part of it. I don't think I should touch it. So I think we'll just wait on the minutes toward the end, then. Are you all right with that? I don't think that we can approve the July 15 ones.
Okay.
All right. So we're going to skip the minutes for now, and we're going to move on to the first application. The first public hearing is the application of Su-Yong Shin, Chair, First Unitarian Universalist Society of Exeter Board of Trustees for a special exception, word missing in there, for Article 4, Section 4.2 Schedule I, and Article 5, Section 5.2, to permit child daycare and early childhood education for no more than 20 children in their existing children's classrooms and nursery, and a variance from Article 5, Section 5.6.6, to allow for a reduced number of parking spaces required for child daycare use. Subject property is located at 10 Elm Street in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District and is identified as Tax Map Parcel 72-166, and this is ZBA Case 25-6. We have a request for both a special exception and a variance. I believe it's our process normally to have one discussion, but two separate votes. So we do need to act on both the special exception and the variance because there are different criteria. But I would say that the discussion can take place of questions that the board might have concerned both the applications that are before us. Please introduce yourself and...
Excuse me, Mr. [inaudible].
Yes. Voting members, good point. Thank you. I always forget something. Hmm? What? Oh, did he say that?
I didn't want to interrupt you. It was on top of that.
We all thought it.
You all thought it? Nobody said it, but nobody said anything. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for correcting me. Get the smiles off your faces.
It wasn't made.
Oh, yeah, it was. You see the smile down the end there. Okay. So we've got Kevin, Bob, and Esther. We need two of the five alternates to be voting members. Show of hands, anybody jonesing to be on this one? Laura Montagno and?
Mark.
And Mark. Fine, will be voting members. Martha and John, please feel free to participate in the discussion. Thank you, sir, for your patience.
No problem. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paul Friedrichs. I'm an Exeter resident at 9 Newfield Road, and I am the trustee and the recording secretary of the Board of the First Unitarian Society of Exeter, which we call FUSE. And I'm accompanied tonight by Su-Yong Shin, who's the Chair of our Board of Trustees and the signatory on the applications, which were unanimously endorsed by the rest of the Board of Trustees. So the First Unitarian Universalist Society of Exeter, FUSE, acquired our Elm Street property in 1867 and opened our first church there in 1868. This is the signage on Elm Street, shows the front of our sanctuary, looking down Elm Street towards Court Street. We own combined a frontage of 371, we own a combined frontage of 371 feet on Elm and Maple Streets. So we are here, number 10. Our property comes from here on Elm Street to the corner, and then out Maple Street to there, which has a square footage of 32,385 feet. At one time, we had three separate buildings on the property. The original church built in 1868, that was torn down in 1942. That was on this corner here, which is now lawn and garden. Our current parsonage, that was built in 1874, which is that building, and then Unity Hall, which was built in 1890. And when the other church was torn down, this was converted into our current church, and subsequently a parish hall was put it on the back as an L. The basement of our parish hall contains four children's classrooms. This is the entrance to, one of the entrances, but the entrance to the parish hall that would be used by the childcare group, and the parish hall stretches into an L with the sanctuary. This is the sanctuary, and one goes downstairs, and there are four classrooms in the basement. And they were remodeled in 2021. Childcare and early childhood education fit our values and our mission. Then we hosted the Exeter Head Start Program in our parish hall from 1978 until the late Although we are zoned in R2, the northern half of Elm Street is C1. So this is our property here. This is Elm Street. Court Street's just off the map here, coming up to Front Street here. This is Maple Street. So here we are in R2. C1 comes here and here. So the northern half of Elm Street is C1, and the entire western half of Elm Street is occupied by Phillips Exeter Academy. PEA is our only R2 zoned butter on Elm Street, and we have only one R2 zoned butter on Maple This is a picture mid-afternoon on a weekday last month of Elm Street. Looking past the church, you see the signage there again on the left. Unrestricted parallel parking is allowed on both sides, the entire length of Elm Street. But weekday street parking is almost entirely used by non-residents and rarely by FUSE members, staff, or visitors. Our plan to meet the zoning ordinance requirement for off-street parking for staffing a child daycare facility is to install a mesh-protected lawn parking, mesh-protected lawn parking adjacent to our existing Maple Street gravel driveway. You see our gravel driveway there. It's 20 feet wide by 40 feet deep off the road. We do a 38-by-20-foot section here, contiguous with there, going 20 feet in this direction for four additional parking spots. We currently park four spots in the gravel driveway for our own church staff. So essentially doubling the size of the parking area off of Maple Street. I brought along a sample of the mesh, this recycled plastic, put on top of the lawn, pinned down tightly. The lawn grows up through it, and you have a parkable grass parking area. Here's another view closer to the property line on the left. Another view. Currently, there is a no-parking sign because you can't, there's no parking on that side of Maple Street. It would be moved, of course, probably over to there to allow the access to the grass parking area. For off-street parking, for drop-off and pickup of students, we will use our existing 20-foot-wide by 32-foot-long paved Elm Street driveway. To not exceed the 1-to-3 space-per-student ratio for the zoning ordinance, we will use timed drop-off and pickup time intervals of no more than five students per 15-minute interval, thus providing a 2-to-5 space-per-student ratio in the timing. We realize that there'll be an occasion where a third car may show up when two other cars are there, and we would have to have the very brief parking on the street for that to occur. But throughout the day, after drop-off, before pickup, there's no off-street, no street parking requirements for this proposal. This is where the old church was, which is now lawn and garden space. We believe that this proposal keeps value to our butters and other neighbors by providing an in-town, walkable daycare and preschool alternative while keeping our attractive lawn and garden from turning into a parking lot. On the application, I did put some references to the shortage of daycare facilities in the state, the concerns by the business community about that in terms of being able to recruit and retain workers who need daycare, and just the general need for this service in New Hampshire. Thank you very much. Be happy to entertain questions.
Stay right where you are. Mr. Friedrichs, you mentioned in passing, there's no parking on Maple Street on your side of Maple Street?
Correct. On the south side of Maple Street is posted no parking.
The entire length of it?
Yes, the entire length of it, yeah.
Had you considered, and could you give us sort of a benefit and drawbacks of having the Maple Street drop-off as opposed to Elm Street drop-off?
It's, there's not a walkway that's very safe between there and the entry door. It's across lawn. There's gravel steps. There's no railing on it. We don't even clear that area of snow in the winter because we don't want our own staff and members crossing the lawn and trying to enter that church that direction. They would have to walk to the edge, down the sidewalk, down to Elm Street, and then Elm Street down to our opening. It's just, would be a very poorly designed approach for pickup and drop-off.
Have you had any problems in the past with, I recognize that when PEA is in session, there's a lot of parking on Elm Street.
Yes, a lot of PEA parking, but non-residential parking, correct.
And have you had any problems with that in the past? I know you've got two parking spots there. I mean, are they generally open?
Well, when construction was happening in that section of PEA, it was lined with construction vehicles from about 7:00 a.m. till about 4:00 p.m. If you got there at 6:00 or 6:30, there was plenty of parking. But, you know, that's been a issue.
But you didn't have problems with people parking in front of your reserved spots?
We have had concerns with, we don't know who, people parking in the no-parking zones, and we occasionally called that in, but not had much of a response from the town.
So who will be managing the daycare facility itself?
From the church's standpoint, I'm the person who'll be communicating with the, we have a couple who are interested in signing a lease with us and operating the thing which would be a state licensed, proceed to a state license. We've given, the lease would give them a 90-day period to acquire state licensure, and it would be, as it says in the application, no more than 20 children.
And you would execute a lease with them that would include whatever specifics are agreed to?
Include, absolutely. We have it all drafted up and ready to go, we hope, but it specifies that they would be staff parking in that area off of Maple Street, and that, and they are aware of the timed, timed drop-off and are fully in agreement with that. I believe that may be abused in other daycare facilities, like the one off of High Street, Exeter Day School, whatever, that was, you know, cars backed up out of Marlboro, whatever the street is, out to High Street. And I believe that might have been one of the solutions to that.
Yeah, it's a dead-end street.
Yeah.
Any other members of the board have questions for the applicant?
I do, actually, and it's a good segue because I live very close to the Exeter Day School and the parking. And actually, that actually is working fairly well now, but they do a number of events, and so that was one of my questions, is do you anticipate there being non-typical day, you know, school day events where you'll have parents there at times other than just for?
We do not anticipate, and I'm happy, the church would be happy to not allow that. We're not interested in seeing our property extended to that extent, no.
And I guess along those same lines, I would imagine that most of the church activities are, that bring a lot of parishioners in our, are on the weekends, but can you speak to what weekday use there may be?
Yeah. The weekend traffic for both our church and the church across Maple Street, which is in the C1 zoning and has zero off-street parking, including for staff, is, you know, substantial Sunday mornings. So people park some distance, some on Court Street, certainly the whole length of Elm Street, and walk. And so there's, this weekday traffic is going to be a lot less than the Sunday traffic, for sure. We have weekday evening events. We host a number of 12-step support groups, and none of them start before 5:00 p.m. One of them is a Saturday morning, and then our Sunday. We have Friday evening coffee hours in the church, and we have occasional social events, but always in the evening. So in terms of membership coming to the church, we don't have any weekday daytime events. They're all in the evening or on the weekends. The staff, we have four staff members, an RE director, a minister, an office administrator, and a music director. And those four vehicles, if they come in separate vehicles, are going to be parked in our gravel driveway where there are four spaces currently. So we have enough off-site, off-street parking for our entire staff. What happens is people come in to meet with the minister, or there's occasionally daytime committee meeting, but usually in the evening because of the work schedules of our membership. So there may be three or four people come on any given weekday to visit the parsonage where our church offices are. Some days, there would be zero. Yeah. So my board chair concurs with that.
And can you, I'm sorry, and can you just remember, I'm not sure if you mentioned the, or maybe you didn't, the timeframe for the daycare?
We would allow them because, again, for working parents, they want to start at 6:30 in the morning. So they would have their staff in before 6:30 and be ready to receive children at 6:30 in the morning. Because people had to get to work at 7:00 at the hospital and elsewhere, you know, shifts and whatever, 7:00 shifts. And then it would be, 5:00 would be the latest departure. The lease states that all children will be out of the building by 5:00 p.m. We would allow the staff to stay until 6:00 so they can do the cleanup that's going to be required and what have you. But it's a pretty much turnover. They, the lease says they only have access to the spaces that they're renting from 6:30 a.m. They can come in at 6:00 for the staff, but yeah, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. with students only there from 6:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the very latest, and no access on weekends or evenings past that hour.
Yeah, I ask a couple clarifying questions on the parking.
Sure.
So the drop-off parking, are those two spaces in the front where they're going to be, so parents are going to be pulling in face forward and then backing out onto the street? Okay. And then on the staff parking side, could you bring that image up where you're going to put the?
That's, that's a view of the staff area there, the gravel. I have another additional view here. That's the current four vehicle where we park the staff now.
Okay.
I mean, the daycare staff?
Yeah, well, that, well, that's...
To the left of that van.
Right, to the left of the van. So...
So I have a few pictures there. That's looking towards Maple Street, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. So I have a couple of questions about that. So is, what are the, what percentage of the time are church staff going to be parked at the same time as daycare staff?
Well, our church staff, the RE director and the music director are part-time. The music director lives in Maine, you know, so I don't know how many days they're there, but it's not every day.
It's not a lot. And I think currently the minister has been having a staff meeting on Monday, so I think that would be the most populated traffic.
So, yeah. You should answer through the microphone for our TV audience.
Okay. So our staff is, the part-time RE director and music director are not there a lot during the week because they're paid part-time and most of it intensified around the weekend. There is a staff meeting on Mondays that all, four of them would be there. So usually it would be one or two cars because the office administrator is, only works there. Again, it's been a part-time job. The minister has, because she works weekends, has a couple of days that she doesn't come in. So there would be two hours a week where all four cars are there.
But regardless, there are four separate parking spaces on the gravel for staff, and four separate parking spaces on the noose.
I understand that, but how are all those four, all eight of those cars going to pull into that space, right? How deep is it going from?
Four wide by two deep.
It's 40 feet, the gravel is 40 feet to the garage and 20 feet ride currently. We would add a 38-foot-by-20-foot-wide grass parking. The staff would do it in a way because they know each other's schedules.
So they're going to be that way?
Yeah.
So they'll pull, everybody's going to pull in from Maple Street and park this way?
Yeah.
Okay.
But they will know, our staff will know their own schedules, so I, you know, when you're coming in and you know someone's going to be leaving and you're going to be staying, you know, you're either getting in, you know, it happens that people can park four cars and have a sense of who needs to leave first, or if necessary, leave the building and go let the other person out. Likewise, the daycare staff would know... Likewise, the daycare staff would know, you know, if someone else, if someone starts early and leaves late, or someone comes late, or whatever.
A lot of culture.
They'd figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Let's see, at this stage, I would open this up to any members of the public who would like to comment on the application. If anyone would like to, to do that, please step to the microphone. I had a sneaky suspicion you were all here for something else. Why am I surprised? Oh, we got one, we got a volunteer. The man with the interesting ringtone.
My name's Steve Taylor, I live at 30 Haven Lane in Exeter.
Okay.
I'm all for the daycare, love the idea, I'm just wondering where the playground's going to be. Because every daycare has to have a playground.
Mr. Friedrichs, why don't you wait a minute, and then we'll let you rebut should there be any questions. Anybody else from members of the public would like to say something?
Ryan O'Brien, 20 Haven Lane. My only question would be with the, with the grass, plastic overlay, that doesn't sound very plowable in the wintertime, sounds like something that would be easily damaged.
Now, don't forget Haven Lane, folks, they're going to stick around and quiz you.
Yeah, yeah, no.
So be careful, be careful how far you go with this.
That's all, that's my only comment.
Okay.
It's just, thank you.
All right. Any other members of the public? Mr. Friedrichs, would you care to comment on the two questions that were brought up?
Well, that's interesting, because we don't think a gravel driveway is very plowable either, especially when the end of it ends at a garage. We do not plow our gravel driveway, we will not be plowing the plastic mesh, we, you can use a, I'm looking forward to the plastic mesh because we can't do our snow thrower of the gravel either, because it picks up all the gravel and throws it all over the place. So we do the gravel driveway by hand, and I'm looking forward to being able to use our snow thrower on the mesh, which it should slide right across.
Will there be outside activities, and where would that take place?
The lease currently that we've drafted specifies temporary movable fencing that is, meets our qualifications in terms of aesthetics. It does require 30 feet, square feet per student, so up to 600 square feet if they've got it full, the max 120. It's going to be in this area here, because the, they like the idea of the shade from the maple tree and another tree in the summer. They are very insistent, they're not going to have any plastic playground equipment, they're into a very natural approach, they, with, they call it a dirt playground or something like that, they're not going to dig up the lawn. But it's going to be a temporary one with fencing that will, the lease specifies they remove the fencing every week and stow it, so that when our church membership is using the property on the weekends, it's stowed. So there's going to be no permanent playground equipment, there's going to be no bright plastic slides or things like that, it's going to be a runaround, and they're going to bring in, I think, play tables or something for the kids to muck around in and play with, so. I don't know the, I'm not a child preschool expert, but that's what they've described.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. With that, we're going to close the public session and go into deliberations. As the bar for a variance is higher than it is for a special, special exception, I'm going to suggest we go through the variance criteria first, make a decision on that, and, but I think our discussion can concern both. Would anyone like to kick us off, read through the criteria, make some comments? Mark, John, Esther, anyone down the right? Can make me do all the talking? It's dangerous. Martha, Kevin, Laura, anybody else?
I, well, I have a concern about the safety of the parking and the people pulling in and backing out onto a street where there are a lot of cars that are parked there during the day. Especially at drop-off, or more so at pickup, there's going to be a lot of cars there, so like it just being blinded, you're, you know, you have a lot of cars backing out into a street where they may not see oncoming cars.
I was actually kind of surprised by that myself, because when I, when I walked the site, I personally thought that, you know, especially given the side of the street, that somebody would pull in parallel, open the door, let the kid, you know, a staff member could be there to greet them, and that way it would be much faster, they wouldn't even have to get out of the car necessarily.
Is there enough room to do that, then?
There's one car at a time, there's plenty of room to do that.
I guess, then how is that going to be enforced and managed?
You know, if you've got people, as, as the applicant has stated, they've got a timed, you, you know, the five of you have got this 15-minute window, and we would hope that that would spread out, some people are going to be early, some will be late, of course, it's going to happen, but people are going to have to, there'll be some honking, there'll be some honking either way, I think.
I'm more concerned about accidents than honking.
Yep, yeah, but we got to trust that not only are the parents going to be taking care of their kids, but that the staff members from the daycare center are going to be out there to greet them and to make sure that they're walking their way in safely.
And I can see this change, I mean, in my mind, the, I think the time drop-off is an important factor, and I would, if we approve, I would suggest we make that a.
You said that's what they do at the Exeter Day School now, and that's?
That's my understanding. It seems much better, and I will say this is worlds better in terms of a setup, although, you know, you couldn't, you really couldn't come up with a worse, a worse setup than the Exeter Day School, although they've made it work.
Yep, and they have some fine alumni, too, I want them.
I mean, it's, it's great, it's a great spot, it's a great spot, and it's wonderful backing up to the PEA fields.
Yeah, yeah.
But in terms of pickup and drop-off access.
It's awful.
You couldn't design a worse.
You couldn't design it worse. No place to turn around.
No place to turn around, yeah.
No, I think this will work, I think this can work.
Right, and I don't think we have to tie them to the, I mean, if it's a better, a safer way to do it, I think they can do that as long as we have the timed drop-off as a condition. I think this street actually lends itself pretty well because of the, I mean, because the, there's a church, it is, we're dealing with a church, there's a church next to it, there is Phillips Exeter, which has some traffic, but not, it is not driving the type of traffic at that particular time that, you know, other uses would. I actually think that, that it's going to be far less intensive than the current weekend church traffic.
Yep.
Both of the subject property and the, you know, the churches around it. So I think this, I'm less concerned, although I do, I do think the, the timed piece is important, because I could see this queuing and becoming an issue for the, for the residents that live nearby.
So you would suggest making that a stated condition of approval, okay? Would anyone like to go either make comments or start, start going through the variance criteria?
So if I can just make comment, having worked for PEA and driven that road and know when the kids are out there and when the staff bring their kids to lunch and stuff like that, the morning time, I think this plan is fantastic as it essentially says we are not going to have access to parallel parking, because, but having been a parent, if the parking is jacked up and I have a parallel spot five steps ahead and I just walk my kid on the sidewalk, a lot of people are going to do that. And being said, at 6:30 in the morning to 8:00, there's not a lot of people getting breakfast that time, that street's going to be pretty open. We might run into it more when dinnertime, but even then, dinner's really not going to hit till like 5:00, when they actually open up dinner, so like a lot of that street.
Well, sure, there's a dining hall across the street.
The dining hall, and since they opened, since they opened up the other dining hall, it's now separated, so a lot of staff that were primarily only going to the Elm Street dining hall are now able to decide between the two. So like the last year or two, when they've been under construction.
Everybody was at Elm Street.
Everybody's been going to Elm Street.
Right.
So now that the second dining hall is open, it's going to detract from traffic that much more, especially with the construction having just finished, so they're no longer fencing off that whole area, they're no longer taking up massive spots in front of that area, like, I think, I'm not as concerned with parking or with having people back up, because I think they're going to be able to just probably either parallel park or be able to pull in, so.
Very good. Who'd like to read, go through the variance criteria? I'll appoint someone. Mark, would you like to do it, please?
I need to borrow somebody's book if I'm going to do it.
Nope, got one right there.
All right.
It's on the next page.
Next page, this one, not this one?
It's back, it's more detail in the back.
Oh, God.
Variance.
So variance criteria, the applicant must establish all of the following, one, the requirement is the variance is not contrary to the public interest, two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, three, substantial justice.
Well, let's talk about, stop, let's take one and two together and discuss those for a minute.
Okay.
They're usually taken together.
Yep.
So not contrary to the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance is observed.
Yep.
Your thoughts?
Um, I don't think that it's contrary to the public interest to allow this, I don't see it expanding the footprint of the building in any way, we're not pushing out any, like the space currently exists there, we're just trying to allow more people to park, right? That's, so I don't think that's contrary to public interest, especially weighed against how, I'm not going to say desperately, but being in the, with two young children and speaking to other parents, I know childcare is a huge hurdle for people to find, it usually ends up that one parent end up just not working.
And as the applicant pointed out, there was a daycare center here previously that had been approved by this body.
Yeah.
That use has been suspended, but we would be bringing it, bringing that use back, okay?
And I think it's, I mean, the test is generally whether it's, you know, will alter the character of the neighborhood, or whether it will impair the health, safety, and welfare, and I think, again, this is, there was a daycare there, there's a, there is church use there, this is consistent with that use, it aligns well because it's weekday rather than again, and I think for the reasons that Mark noted, there's no risk of the health, safety, and welfare by allowing less parking, they've addressed the, they've addressed the pickup and drop-off, they've, they've added spaces, and I think to Mark's point, I do appreciate the fact that, you know, they, they've determined to do it in a way where parallel parking isn't needed, where stacking isn't needed, but I think there's space there if, if it occurred. So the fact that they've avoided it all together is, it feels all the better.
Good. Mark?
Requirement three, substantial justice is done.
So the test is the benefits of the applicant should not be outweighed by harm to the general public or other individuals.
Yeah.
Feel good about that?
I mean, I do, I'm not the only one on the board, though, right? So.
Yeah, but you're, you're task.
I do, yeah.
Leading us on this.
Oh, yeah, I feel that the benefits of the applicant isn't outweighed by harm to the general public, we didn't seem to have any general public outcry against putting anything in here, despite having lots of people here. And I think that there actually would be a benefit to the general public by allowing 20 potential families to have childcare.
You bet. Number four?
The values of surrounding properties are not diminished. We haven't had any expert testimony for or against this, we haven't shown anybody to say that it's going to be diminished. I wouldn't say that, just in my own personal experience, that I've known a childcare center to be local and nearby to diminish the property value. I would say that I've purchased enough homes to know that people point out when there is nearby childcare to me when I'm buying a house, and I go, oh, good, so we could walk the kids to school, and that sort of makes it more incentive.
And everybody's favorite, number five?
Literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship, unnecessary hardship means, because of the special conditions.
You don't, you don't need to read that.
Okay. I didn't know that, so.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're good right there. Do you, do you believe that there is, a variance requires there to be some hardship? Is there, is there?
I don't believe there's some hardship, I don't, maybe I'm not understanding that.
Well, little enforcement of the ordinance would say, no, you can't do this.
Oh, 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 sorry.
So the hardship to the applicant is that they would not be able to utilize their property in a manner in which it is.
Already been previously allowed to be used.
And is entirely appropriate for it.
Yeah. So then, yes, I think it would cause unnecessary hardship, sorry.
Was I leading the?
Yes, you were, that's okay.
It's fine, I'm not doing testimony, we're just having a conversation.
Yeah, that was pretty bad, wasn't it? Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll accept a motion on the variance.
It's fairly meaningful, so you can do it.
I would move to approve the variance to permit, well, what was the number?
The variance is, it just says a reduced.
Yeah.
It's not specific, it just says a reduced.
Well, it's a reduced number of parking spaces required for daycare use as, you know, as presented in the application.
Okay.
And on the condition that the applicant utilize timed pickup and drop-off.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Five-zero on the variance, let's move on to the special exception, please. Would somebody else like to walk us through the criteria there? So basically, the special exception is to allow child daycare and early childhood education for no more than 20 children.
I can walk through, yes?
Yep.
First is that the use is a permitted special exception as set forth in Article 4.2, which is the table of uses it is, it is allowed as, with special, by special exception.
Yep.
That the use is so designed, located, and proposed to be operated that the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience will be protected, I think we addressed that on the, on the variance, given the, the time drop-off and given the layout, had no impact to the, the public health, safety, welfare, convenience.
Okay.
That the proposed use will be compatible with the zone district and adjoining post-1972 development, whereas to be located, which is the one that we never really fully makes sense to me, but as I read it, it's, it's ultimately, is it compatible with the, you know, existing and permitted use, not just grandfathered uses, and it is, I mean, it's, this is really truly compatible with the existing church use, both of this property and surrounding it.
Agreed.
As well as the, the institutional school use directly across the street.
Mm-hmm.
That adequate landscaping and screening are provided, I think, given what was described, it is, I have some questions about the temporary fencing, but, but I think the layout is sufficient, and I, I am, I'm comfortable with it.
I actually think that the church's own aesthetic concerns outweigh any, and so they're going to be the, the ones that are going to police the.
I suspect you're right.
Yeah.
That adequate off-street parking and loading is provided, and ingress and egress is so designed to cause minimal interference with traffic on abutting streets, yes with the grant of the variance, and for the reasons that we granted the variance.
And with the condition.
And with the condition, yes, and that the use conforms with all applicable regulations governing the district where located, and that is my understanding, is, is yes, subject to our granting the variance, which we did, all of the applicable regulations are or will, or will be met.
Okay.
And that, oh, the next is, I don't think we feel the need to require a site plan.
No external modifications.
The use will not adversely affect abutting or nearby property values, we've already found with the variance that that was the case, I don't think the special exception changes that.
Okay.
And the rest relate to, to uses that don't apply here.
Thank you, Mr. Baum, you're on a roll, do you want to go ahead and make a motion there?
I would move to approve the application for special exception to permit child daycare and early childhood education for no more than 20 children in the existing classroom and nursery at the subject property located at 10 Elm Street. and nursery at the subject property located at 10 Elm Street.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Did any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. You're all set, guys. Thank you very much for your application.
Thank you.
Okay. And now what you've all been waiting for.
Kevin's like, I'm out of here.
All right, we're going to move on to the application of Green and Company for variances from Article Four, Section four point two, Schedule I, to permit residential use in the C two highway commercial zoning district, from Article Four, Section four point four, Schedule Three, to permit reduced front and rear setback requirements for the proposed residential use and from Article Six, Section six dot one nine, for relief from the mix relief from the mixed use neighborhood development munde requirements, to permit the property at 76 Portsmouth Avenue to be subdivided. Subject property is located in the C two highway commercial zoning district and is identified as tax map parcel sixty five dash one eighteen. This is EBA case twenty seven twenty five dash seven. Mr. Baum?
I need to refuse myself from this application. I'll be stepping down.
Thank you for your presence this evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And we need to appoint the alternates who would be voting on this case. We have Ms. Pennell, Ms. Montagno, Mr. Lemus and Mr. Dal Santo. And we need three of you. One, two, three, two of you. Sorry, two.
Three. We're the only two full members right now.
We are, aren't we?
Yep.
Yeah, we need three of you.
I'll do it. I'll vote. Sure.
John, are you okay? You've been.
Oh, yeah, I'm just observing.
You're right.
He's still learning.
Everybody else jumped in. Okay.
Right.
Mr. Lemus, Ms. Pennell and Ms. Montagno will be the voting members. With that, we do have town council with us this evening. And I would like to survey the members of the board if they think it would be useful for us to have a conversation with council before we begin talking about this case.
I believe so, yes.
Think that'd be a good idea.
Agreed.
Agreed?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need to take a vote on that to move into non-meeting? I believe that would be a good idea. Can some would somebody like to make a motion, which we can then second in order to go into a non-meeting meeting?
I move to go into non-public session?
It's not what it's actually called.
Okay, onto non-public.
It's non. It's called a non-meeting.
Okay, I move to go to a non-meeting.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Shall we adjourn?
Yes.
We'll be right back. We'll just.
Please do.
Leaving the room. Okay, so I've already read the introduction. This is the application to Green and Company. Would the applicant like to make a presentation to us?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Attorney John Bosson who represent the applicant. With me this evening from Green and Company is Michael Green and Jenna Green. Also accompanied by our engineer Paige Libby from Jones and Beach.
Very good.
By way of background, this project involves the development of a four-story mixed-use project that did receive full approval from the Exeter Planning Board on March 27, 2025. But because of a lease with the existing tenant Fisher Auto Parts, which sits on the commercial part of this property, that lease runs potentially through the year 2034. This project, if you know from the planning board approval, was approved in two phases. Phase one involves the construction of the townhouses off Haven Lane. Phase two involves the multi-use building on Portsmouth Avenue. Our planning board approval in phases does give us the right to build these phases out over a 10-year period. We're not seeking any, and this is very important, we're not seeking any changes or to amend our development plans in any way. We're really talking about a line or a plan, and that's our reason for being here tonight, to ensure that we can deliver to the town of Exeter exactly what we told the planning board we could do. So to some degree, almost a housekeeping item, because again, a line or a plan. We're seeking three variances tonight for that. First, from Article 4.2, to allow standalone residential uses in the C2 zone. Second variance is from Article 4.4 Schedule 111, to allow a front setback of 23.2 where 50 feet is required, and a rear setback of 9.4 where 50 feet is required. And from Article 6.19, to allow the project as approved on two separate lots. By granting the variances, it will allow the residential use on a commercially zoned parcel, reduction of the front rear setbacks will match what was approved by the planning board in accordance with the MUND standards, and will simplify the creation of the condominium that's the contemplated form of ownership for this project. The challenge we've run into is that the condominium statute essentially requires that Phase 2 be built no later than five years from the date of the recording of the condominium. It's possible with the existing tenant, because of its lease options, that that tenant stays in place until the year 2034, which could make it difficult or impossible to comply with that timeline. That's why we're here this evening. So as a result, the applicant is proposing that the property be subdivided into two separate lots, so that each phase of the project will have a separate condominium association. This also makes sense from a condominium standpoint, because the two condominiums are really very different. They're not going to really act and react to each other like one project. There really is two phases and two projects. Phase one would get declared now when built, Phase 2 would get declared when the auto part lease expires or when they vacate the property. And all other aspects of this property remains exactly the same. Nothing changes. So with that background, I would like to ask Paige Libby to just walk the board through the plans very briefly, and then I'll come back and talk about the five part criteria.
May I ask a question before you move on?
Please.
Has anything changed with either the lease arrangement or the property ownership since the point at which you submitted your plans to the planning board?
The property ownership has changed now that my client is the property owner. Before, we were under a contract to purchase the property, but the lease is the same.
The lease is the same?
Correct.
So you were aware these conditions existed at the time at which you applied for the planning board?
We were aware that the lease ran, potentially, the lease has a five-year option, so if the tenant exercises that option, we were aware that they could be out there until 2034, which is the reason why we asked that the plan of the project be approved in two phases over a 10-year period.
And the condominium regulations you refer to, have those changed?
They have not.
Okay, thank you very much. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Paige Libby with Jones and Beach Engineers. So I'll just run through the site plan quickly and the proposed subdivision plan that we submitted with our application package. So the rear portion of the site, as approved, is proposed to be 34 townhouses with two access points off of Haven Lane. And then the front portion of the site is proposed to be commercial space on the first floor with 36 one-bedroom residential units above. One thing that's important to note about this property, and part of the reason why it's sort of designed almost as two separate developments that aren't very connected, is that topographically, the lot is quite separated via a ravine almost that runs through the property right along where we're proposing our lot line. And there's quite a bit of drainage that comes into the property from the hospital and Portsmouth Ave, as well as a budding properties that all connect through that point. So where we're proposing our lot line runs right along that ravine between the two properties. So Lot 2 will be in the back here with the townhouse development, and Lot 1 will be in the front.
I assume the lot line is the red dashed line?
It is, that's correct, yes.
On this chart, yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that's the only lot line that changes as part of this development. It just separates the front part of the parcel from the rear part of the parcel, so that Lot 1 has frontage on Portsmouth Ave and Lot 2 has frontage on Haven Lane. Both of the lots meet all the zoning criteria otherwise, so both lots are large enough to be a lot that stands on their own within the C1 zone, and also meet all of the frontage requirements as well.
Thank you. Okay, you said you wanted to come back after that, Mr. Bosson?
With that background, I'd just like to run the board through the five variance criteria. First, granting the variance will not be contrary to the spirit intended of the ordinance, nor will it be contrary to the public interest. And the test here is whether the variance being granted could substantially alter the characteristics of the neighborhood or threaten the health, safety, and welfare of the public. The essential characteristics of the neighborhood would not be altered by these variances that we see tonight for the simple fact that the project has already been approved by the planning board and deemed appropriate for the neighborhood. The relief sought does not change the project on the ground, simply creates a boundary line between the two phases that ensures the success of the approved project. Next, substantial justice would be done by granting the variances. And whether or not substantial justice would be done requires the board to conduct a balancing test. If the hardship upon the owner outweighs any benefit to the public in denying the variances, then substantial justice would be done by granting the variances. And in this case, there's no benefit to the public in denying the variances, because the project's already been approved by the planning board. And creating a boundary line between these phases will not create any differences on the ground that's not grossly outweighed by the hardship upon the owner. On the other hand, denying the variances would result in an inability, or could result in an inability to construct Phase 2, which is meant to provide much-needed housing in Exeter, some of which is designed to be workforce housing. Next, the value of surrounding properties will not be diminished. The reason here is because the project is fully approved by the planning board. Whether the phases are constructed in one or two will have zero effect on the value of property values. In terms of hardship, this property is clearly unique, because it has access and frontage on Portsmouth Avenue, as well as Haven Lane, which lends itself to a separate development for each phase.
Pardon me, you say in number four, but you're proposing to divide the property, the variances would only apply to the rear property, which has no access on to Portsmouth Avenue?
Well, right now, it's one lot.
But the variance criteria are only for the rear?
Yeah.
Well, the variance criteria is for the, we're asking that it's for the entire property. We only have one parcel.
But you're putting it into two.
But you want to make it two.
Correct.
And, but you're saying that it has access to Portsmouth Ave, but you're applying it to the one that doesn't. That's the problem.
I'm confused by...
Well, the property currently has access and frontage in Portsmouth Ave, as well as Haven, currently.
Perhaps a clarification, please. Who owns what? Is it one piece of property now?
One piece of property now.
There's been a lot line merger, so it's the, or did the people in the front, the auto parts place owned everything?
Yes.
And they have sold everything to you all?
Correct.
So RAP is the real estate holding company for the auto parts?
The auto part store is the tenant, and RAP was the former owner.
Former owner. So the property owner is RAP Realty Manchester LLC, as of the date of application?
Yes.
But you now own the land?
That's correct.
Green and Company. Members of the public should please wait. I appreciate you want to jump in.
He's green.
Oh, he's green? Well, he's got to be up here. Okay, if he's green, he's got to be up here.
You need to talk, if you're going to speak, you need to speak in the mic so we can hear it.
Right.
Green Company now owns, controls the land.
So RAP is no longer involved?
Correct.
Okay, and it is one parcel, but you're proposing turning it into two?
Correct.
The variance criteria that you're asking, that you're now describing, will be on both parcels or just the rear parcel?
Both parcels, yes.
Because we're asking, we're asking to subdivide, we need a variance, really, we're asking for approval, put that red line on the plan. That's the only thing that changes.
It's not what you're asking us for. You're asking us for a variance. You're not asking us for to subdivide a lot. You don't ask the CBA to subdivide a lot. That's why counsel's here, because we're not really sure why you're here. That's the issue. That's what I'm driving at, is I don't understand why you're here. You have an approved project. Nothing has changed with either the condominium regulations under which you operate, or the property, since you applied to the planning board. So why are you here?
The property is C2 zone.
Yes.
We don't allow to put that residential use.
You are under the MUND, and you have approval for it.
Understand. We understand that.
Which has nothing to do with, MUND, for better or for worse, is strictly, you go right to planning, you skip us. So this is the first time this project has ever come before zoning, because it was not part of zoning.
It is approved, we did get approval under the MUND.
Right.
But we haven't approved this one lot, we would like to have it approved as two lots, so we were directed to come to the zoning board.
It seems to me that what you're asking for in this application is three variance requests specific to what would become the rear portion.
But the residential portion, which is the back portion...
But there's residence in the front as well, is there not?
Yes, but this is asking that the residential portion be allowed, that use be allowed in the C2 district.
Without any commercial...
I'm being, I'm being picky.
I understand.
Residential is not the right term, because there's residence, there will be residences in both.
Correct.
So the rear portion, let's use, not, let's not call that residential versus commercial, since it doesn't divide neatly that way. I'm trying to figure this, we're trying to figure this out, and I get to sit here and talk for everybody else.
And you're doing a good job.
We're just trying to figure it out. You guys, you guys confer. You understand our confusion, Mr. Bosson, Mr. Green, we're, it is Mr. Green, isn't it? Okay. I'm just trying to figure out that we know exactly what we're being asked to look at here.
Our understanding of the MUND zoning is that the commercial and the residential have to be on one lot together.
Correct.
So subdividing off the rear lot creates a non-conformance, so it's really a use variance that we're asking for. And then, since the MUND zoning is within the zoning versus the site plan regulations, there's one section, I believe, that we reference in our application that we're also asking for the variance from. So it is mostly for the rear portion of the lot, which would become Lot 2, but because Lot 1 was part of the overall MUND development, where we asked for it for both, essentially, Lot 1 and Lot 2, because it's all one development.
So you're asking for, you already have approval.
Correct.
You could build this.
Yes.
Modulo the fact that the auto dealer, at least at present, has a lease. But if we separate it off into a separate lot, you no longer qualify for the MUND.
In the back. Hence the reason for the variance.
If we were to grant the variance, I'm assuming that you're also asking, there are certain, very specific benefits to the MUND. Okay, y'all can stop nodding in the background, I can see you all. I can see these heads going up behind you here, very distracting. Hold that head. You're asking for the benefits of the MUND without the MUND.
We're searching, we have an email, we did, we did run this scenario by town staff. And we do have an email, we were directed to bring this forward to the zoning board, which is why we're here.
It may be that seeking the variance is the only way for you to get what you want, which is appropriate for town staff to have suggested that that's the way to do it.
Yeah.
But we need to understand exactly what it is that you're asking for here, and it's, we'll let you read that, go ahead.
Well, essentially, it's because the residential wasn't permitted in the C2 zone, so we were directed to seek the variance.
Can, do you mind if I...
Please introduce yourself, go right ahead.
Michael Green, Green and Company.
Thank you.
We're, we're kind of going around in a circle, and you're asking great questions. So let me try and, at least from my non-attorney perspective, answer them to the best I can. Where the development has been approved under the MUND?
Yep.
The, the approval is in place for the development just as it's being built. This is purely a structure issue, which is why we're asking for the variance, so that we can then subdivide the lot with the planning board.
What type of a structure issue?
Ownership structure. Because when you're sitting with a condominium development, and then you have another condominium development, when they're all built at the same time, it all works beautifully. In this case, even though they're not physically attached by road, which was a nod to the neighborhood, because they didn't want through traffic from 108, or Portsmouth Ave, the only thing that really connects is a sidewalk between the two neighborhoods. And even though it's one parcel of land, the only thing that connects is the sidewalk. There is no retail in the back, there is retail in the front, there's residential in the back, there will be residential in the front. It qualifies as the MUND as it was approved. In the case of where City Concrete was, you have granted residential in C2 zones and commercial zones. We're not looking for anything that hasn't been done before. The reason we're trying to do it, though, is structurally, when we go to build this, we are going to build the Haven Lane side first. We have to either work out a way to either purchase, which we have no control over, purchase the lease out from under the vendor that's been there, and was originally, Robbins Auto Parts is what RAP stands for, Robbins Auto Parts Realty. Auto Parts was what RAP stands for, Robbins Auto Parts Realty. They retained ownership of the land. They sold the entire business off to Fisher Auto Parts. They are in no hurry to go anywhere. They'd stay there for another 20 years. Part of the MUND was to make some changes to what you see on some of the roads, and the front piece would have both retail and the residential, which is, from what I'm told, highly needed in Exeter. So we're just trying to prevent what could potentially happen down the road. If the back gets built, when we go to build the front, there's a point where we have a five-year window under, what's it?
Condominium conversion, basically. This is five years from the date we record the condominium to convert.
Right. You'll note that at the beginning, I asked if any of those underlying laws had changed since the point at which you created your original application. You said they had not.
Correct.
So you were aware of all of this at the point at which you applied to the planning board?
I, I can't tell you, the law did not change, but we were not, we've never really had a situation where we've ever gone beyond the five years. So when you have a five-year, what's it called, expansion?
Conversion.
Conversion. So basically, the front right now would be a condominium of one, with the Robbins Auto Parts building on it. Within that five-year period, if we build it out, we have five years to do that. There is a five-year extension in the law, that you could go to 10 years, which is why we asked the planning board for the...
For 10 years.
10 years.
Right.
We actually asked for 12, just to make sure we had enough time to build it. But we got the 10. The issue comes in is, five years in, we're no longer in control of the board of the back portion. And the back portion has a say in what we do on the front portion, and we were unaware of that. So our lack of knowledge does not change the law, but it's where we are, and all of the things that we're talking about have been done, where residential's been put in the C2 zone. This is already approved as residential. The MUND would stay in the front zone, so all of what's there is done. There would be absolutely no change. We call it a housekeeping issue. How it works with the zoning board, I leave up to attorneys and you. And that's, I just, it's for clarification, so you understand why we're here.
The barrier for a variance is quite high. It's set high by the state in Hampshire for reason. And one of the criteria, and one of the more challenging ones, is hardship. And I'm unfortunately not hearing anything about the nature of the underlying property itself that creates the hardship that you're looking for. You have an approved project, and if there's something legal that is holding you up from building it, that is not something that the zoning board concerns itself with. And unfortunately, nothing has changed. Fortunately or unfortunately, nothing has changed since the point at which of your original application, except perhaps your awareness of this. And that does not impact the, the nature of the property. So if you read the criteria, it says special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. And there's nothing there. You've not addressed that.
Mr. Chair, could we take a two-minute recess?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Feel free to, you know, if you want to privacy somewhere, go right ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We'd like to withdraw the application without prejudice.
That would be fine. I'd like officially to have a motion, please. Would somebody please make a motion that we accept? Okay.
I can do it.
You would like to?
Yeah, I'll do it.
We'll make a motion, just to make it official.
Official?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to find my piece of paper for the application number. Do you have the... Thank you. That's what I'm...
I move that we accept Greening Company's request to, what did they ask you to? To withdraw? Withdraw their application for a variance from Article Four, 4.2, Schedule One, Article Four, Section 4.4, Schedule Three, and Article Six, Section 6.19, without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody from the neighborhood who came out this evening. I hope you enjoyed your time out in beautiful downtown Exeter.
Good ideas for your civic duty.
Town government works.
We're still in session.
We're still in session, so...
You can stay.
Please take advantage of some of our lovely dining and drinking establishments in town.
All right.
We try. We try, we try. We're still...
We're still in session.
Still in session. Thank you.
You're still on TV. All right.
I assume you're all set with that?
Enjoy your drive home.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you. All right. All we have left is minutes and the discussion and the... Did you, could you so quick to correct?
I knew something.
Do you want to join the zoning board?
No.
Oh, then get out.
I do have just a question about whose response, what board is responsible for subdivisions?
We're in session.
We're in session, so I think you should really ask Doug Eastman that question.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Good night. Thank you for being here. Bless you.
Thank you.
All right. So, minutes. You got them?
Yes, July 1st.
Thank you. I can't find my...
It was...
Oh, I know where you have them.
This is the one where we listened to the application, but we just...
You were so quiet, I didn't know you were still back there.
We're in session. So that was, I was here, Martha, Laura, and Mark.
July 1.
Yep. So there are four of us here that were at that meeting.
Okay. So Esther, Martha, Laura, and Mark. Any questions, issues, problems?
Isn't, isn't this, I thought the fir...
The first is when they came back.
The first is when they came back. Thank you.
This was the off-cycle one.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
This was the off-cycle one.
Got it.
It was the special.
I'll be honest, I...
I read them and didn't see anything.
Okay. I did not read them.
Why? Because you got your packet yesterday?
Well, yes, and I would, because I didn't get my packet until yesterday.
Yeah, there's that, yeah.
And...
So if I'm the only one who read them, then maybe we should wait until people can read them?
Well, especially since we can't do the ones for the 15th, because Laura's not here.
What's a separate case, anyway? Completely separate case.
Yeah.
Well, that's true. Never mind, sorry.
Okay. I'll leave it up to the four of you, if you would like to...
Well, Martha, did you, did you see anything?
I'm not.
No. I didn't see anything.
Okay. Mark's not going to be here next month.
Okay, so then, you know what? I say we just vote to approve.
Okay.
It wasn't, like, it was a particularly...
It wasn't a contentious case.
It was not. And there was not a lot of nuances to it, so I think, I move to approve the meeting minutes from the July 1st zoning board of adjustments meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor of approving the minutes of the July 1st 2021, 2025 meeting as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
4-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as the July 15th meetings minutes are concerned, there are some issues there. Most notably is that Laura Davies is not here this evening.
Yep.
And Kevin Baum has left. And so I don't think we would have enough people, anyway. So we're going to pass on the July 15th meeting minutes until next month. Mark, you said you're not going to be here next month?
I'm not. So I don't know if this is the appropriate place to announce. So this will probably be my last CBA meeting. I have to resign from my spot as an alternate on the CBA, as me and my family are moving to British Columbia, Canada.
Whoa!
I sent Barbara an email, like, about a week or two ago, and thought that...
British Columbia?
Salt Spring Island, specifically.
Is this for your wife's position or yours?
My wife's position, and my whole family's, just sort of health in general.
Wow.
Yep, 3,200 miles. We're going to leave September 2nd.
Wow. Okay, so you definitely...
So he's gone?
Yeah, I won't be here.
All right.
So the for sale sign out in front is you, not?
No. That's not us.
Oh, it's one of the others.
It will be, though, but...
There'll be another one soon.
Wow. I'm very sorry to hear that, Mark.
Yeah.
I know, you were...
For us, softly speaking.
I mean, it's...
Wow, good on you, mate.
Yeah, we had to pull the trigger, so, but we're still on recording.
Wow. But you'll be back. I mean, your in-laws are right down the road.
Yeah, and I'm keeping my...
Can you come back once a month?
I'm keeping my job with the state, where I work part-time, so, teaching.
Oh, does that, oh, boy, that's a little shaky. You're not even, it's not like you're out of the state, you're out of the country.
Yeah.
It is a different country, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Where are they?
But I'm a specialty instructor. I teach one class.
All right. Okey-dokey. Boy, have you...
So now that we've aired all of your personal laundry...
You cannot leave the country until you find a replacement for yourself for this board.
Shoot.
Then we need either Martha Pennell, John Dal Santo, or Laura Montagno to step up and say they would like to be a voting member. Martha, you're senior. Would you like to be a voting member again? Or do you like being an alternate?
Well, I would prefer younger blood, but if you're, after you get through all your deliberations, if you're absolutely desperate...
We would never approve you, because we're desperate. That's not, absolutely not. Next, in terms of the date of appointment, would be Laura. Would you like to be a full-time member?
I'll be a full-time member.
Very good.
There you go. You're off the hook, Martha. I'll do it. I'm your younger blood. And I feel like I've done this long enough to...
Just letting you all know, what I will then do is write a note to the Board of Selectmen and ask that Ms. Montagno's position be made a voting member. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Will her date change?
Be irregular.
Probably not. You will probably, no, you would take over...
I'd take over Teresa's.
Which is, expires earlier than yours, so stay with your own date of 2027.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.